Excellent. All right, good evening. I'm gonna call the December 17th, 2019 Board of Selectmen's meeting to order. Can we all please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, uh, under Chairman's announcement, I did want to bring to the rest of the board's attention, um, that there's a rather unattractive sign being used, um, by the Douglas Orchards, uh, that I think is, they're putting it up as a temporary, uh, in replacement of the wooden ones that are up there, which I think is just, I don't remember us agreeing to a temporary sign going up when he pulled the wooden ones down. So I think that might be something that...
Are they there now?
Yes, they're there.
I don't recall saying.
No, they take, he, when he'd come in originally presented to us, he said that he was gonna put them up and then as soon as the winter months came, he was gonna take them down.
I remember him telling us that.
And that was that?
But I haven't seen the temporary ones. How long have those been there?
Uh, since the weekend. He was advertising for Santa, I guess, but it's a god awful sign. It looks like it belongs in front of a gas station and it shouldn't be sitting on a cemetery. So, um, at some point, Matt, maybe we can have a discussion with Mr. Socrate and ask him to please take it down and if he wants to put up winter signage that he can come in front of the town and find something appropriate to put up.
I think the important thing there is to maintain that buffer between a, um, a cemetery and kind of the corner. And the wood sign, I agree with you, was a, was a nice touch. It's frankly a privilege to be there, but thought it added a little bit of character to the town in that space. Um, that sign, I have seen it, um, and that was the first thought I had was for, as long as I've been in town and before that, I know our highway department had protected that corner as, um, off limits to all things. We circumvented that with that sign, but, uh, maybe just a reminder that, um, it's a privilege to be there and that we, we should honor that.
Yeah. So, honestly, I expect you see like people visiting graves or something else and you look over and it's a sign that was like the equivalent of like six pack bud, $2.99.
Yeah.
It was pretty bad. But, uh, that's all I have. Anybody got anything? Thoughts? No? All right. This is only three people here and I know that they're on our agenda. I can go past Citizens Forum and go right into the first agenda item, which is approve all other license renewals and possible votes.
On your cover memo, um, I have the licenses listed out by type and, uh, in the packet is listing out all the licensees and you have the, um, application and then you also have the fire inspections for each. All the, uh, applications are complete. Uh, I never did receive one, however, for a, um, class two license for all-around auto. So I would ask that you approve all licenses except that one.
So moves.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Excellent. All right, so we have the community host agreement between the town and ZNT Inc. Is it right this time?
ZNT, yes. I was gonna quiz you on that.
Come on up.
Who's Z?
Z?
T.
T. Fee to try. I don't know.
How's everybody?
Good. All right. Trying to get to that. Let me do my usual.
Yeah, it's deep in there. We're gone, now almost there. Almost there.
Too much paper. There it is.
Time's gonna run me fine.
All right. And I know Hal, who cannot be with us this evening because it's slippery and opted to stay at home because I believe he almost took a pretty good spill at his house, so, but he did call in and say that he felt comfortable with the agreement as written and presented. Um, this is pretty much a form that was boilerplate that came from legal counsel, so it's in line with the rest of the community host agreements that we have.
Yeah, I don't wanna call it a, uh...
Boilerplate.
Boilerplate, because it is a refined product that's been used in another town, but we customized it for Douglas. We, we struck a couple of terms that were not applicable to our situation, but most importantly, this, this form has been approved by CCC. So by form, I mean this, this document, this approach to the agreement.
Okay.
And, uh, we met, Hal, now Selectman Davis and I met with the ZNT for about a part of an hour, hour and a half, and we did review each and every clause and there was agreement on both. We made only one edit to the original document on page two, subsection D, documentation. Hal asked that the clause, including the company's annual financial statements, be added to the end of that paragraph.
Okay.
Which they'll have to produce for the CCC anyway, so it's really just copying us on the document.
We'll be transparent.
Yep. Um, my only statement for the record is let's just recall a couple of things. The payment won't begin until the company has a final license from the CCC.
Okay.
So however long that takes, the clock doesn't start to tick away at their payment, nor does it tick away on the term of the agreement until they are a fully licensed establishment. Then, the way Kate structured this document is it locks into the calendar year.
Not the fiscal year.
Right. So their payments will begin after, rather than try to explain it that way, let's read it. Schedule of payments, subsection C, still on, still on page two. Within 90 days of the close of each of the first five calendar years ending after the start of the period, which is the payment period, the company shall pay the payment to the town annually for covered sales that were made during the portion, which may be all, of such calendar year included in the CI period. So they have 90 days to pay us for, in March, for everything that was collected prior to January 1st in the prior calendar year. So that might be a whole year's operations, but if they start, if they get their fully license, let's make it convenient, November 1st, the following March, they would owe the town 3% of their gross sales for November sales and December sales. And then you wouldn't see another payment till the following March, but that would be of the full year.
That's it?
Prior.
Makes sense.
I get it.
Yeah, it's rolling and it makes sense because it kinda coincides with the tax year for them and it just makes, it gives them a little bit of time to prepare to make the payments. They'd make the payment at the end of the period. It's not just a scheduled item on their pro forma, on their, on their income statement. It's, it's gonna come after they close their books. It's a five-year agreement, 3% of gross sales. There are some provisions here, um, for how the document would be terminated if there were intervening events, but there was no need to overcook the goose here. This is a fairly straightforward agreement. So it's with, Selectman Davis called you before this meeting to reiterate his recommendation. I certainly think this is a good, perfectly good document and, um, we'll use this with the other two licenses that come into us, hopefully, that will come into us. It'll be a very similar, everybody will be competing on the same terms. We won't alter this.
Yeah. Even level playing field.
Yep.
This is a question on the renewal piece. Um, there's no time certain in that. What happens if we, uh, they make it to year six and we don't have a CI or community host agreement?
Well, I think the key phrase there is to the extent permissible by law.
So it depend on where the cannabis commission comes with that?
If we're still, five years from now, if we're still where we are now.
Yeah.
So that's TBD, I guess.
Okay.
So it is addressed, it's just, uh...
I think it all kinda depends on where the, where these regs go.
Yeah.
Because really, pardon me, that orange chicken was spicy. Um, and I've been yelling at small children all day. Yeah. There isn't anything locked in stone that you have to agree to anything after five years.
Correct, at the moment.
So the only leverage the, that any municipality would have is through its municipal licensing program, but the CCC isn't gonna step in and say you have to renew this. That, that doesn't exist.
No, I think it was for, when they'd thrown it out there, the intent was to get them started and to offset any impacts that this business brings into the community, so...
In this case, the impact payment is a proxy. The proxy is the 3% of gross sales that we're allowed to collect. Now that's the agreement. I think the taxing authority continues after, you know, it's in perpetuity, so, um, that's gonna be there.
Okay.
I don't have any questions.
Looks good to me.
No, that's good. So with that, I would make a motion that we approve the host community agreement presented our packets tonight.
I'll second that.
Excellent. So the motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I do have signature pages now and you want me to get that taken care of so that they can take theirs with them?
Yeah, you need that for the, you guys need that for your PNS, right?
Yep.
Absolutely.
And to submit everything because now everything's gonna go...
I'll have you sign three copies, leave two with me and then you can keep one.
I'm sorry?
I said I'll have, I have three copies, so I'll have you sign all three, leave two with me and you keep one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Excited doesn't even cover it, are you kidding?
What's the rest of your timeframe look like? So this was a, they're gonna send me a form that I have to sign that says this was done.
Realistically, uh, real timeframes that we've been dealing with is about a nine-to-12 month time before the CCC is even gonna get to looking at the application. As you said, we're gonna submit within two weeks. Um, nine to 12 months to hear back from the CCC from there. Anticipate that we're gonna start some of the build out before we hear from the CCC so that we can move the process along as quickly as possible. Worst-case scenario, a year and a half. Best-case scenario, a little over a year.
But with that being said, they're constantly bringing new people on board to shorten that.
Correct. Hopefully, that timeframe gets shortened and the whole timeframe moves up.
But in the meantime, we're gonna, um, right after January 7th, we have this room, um, reserved to do that, the outreach.
Public hearing?
To do the outreach. And then as soon as that is done is when everything's gonna be submitted. He's gonna have everything ready to just submit right away. And we also have still in the middle of discussion, uh, another way we can submit that might shorten it, because it has, uh, the CCC accepts minorities and, and things like that.
Minorities, women in veteran on business that are like, uh, move the timeframe up.
Which can move the timeframe up to two to three months that they'll look at.
Yep.
I'm not gonna stop you.
So they're still...
Thank you.
Worst-case scenario, but you have to remember, it's also like medicine, every year brings new technology and it's the same thing with the CCC. They're always bringing on new rules and new people to, to move this along.
Well, if the government can get in, slow the wheels of progress, they will.
But if everything's submitted, when everything is submitted, um, pristine, then it moves faster and that's why we have Brian, because this is his first rodeo.
Well, congratulations. Look forward to seeing you guys go out.
Guys, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Brian.
And now we can start looking for a house.
Drive carefully out there.
Thank you, thank you.
Sit back down on the commute a little bit.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Happy New Year, God bless.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, so approve minutes and possible votes.
So I'll move that we approve the December 3rd, 2019 meeting minutes and the 2003rd, 2019 executive session minutes, retaining the executive session minutes.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You report, sir.
Mr. Chairman, we are sitting here on, uh, the end of a day where the temperature in Douglas has oscillated back and forth across the freezing line and, um, roadway conditions have been treacherous. We had two, uh, single car accidents in town today. The snow and ice budget is rapidly diminishing, so our first major event of the year followed a couple of small events where we were already using material, but then we had a two-day storm and the guys went out quite a bit. And then they've been at it, this has been a long run today because of this constant back and forth and freezing and, and, and refreezing and, um, so even though we did increase the snow and ice budget last year, over its historical trend, we are still gonna be real, real tight, uh, coming into the new year.
And it's not even winter yet.
And it's not even winter yet, so it's been a very busy fall, but these, these storms where we are intensively dropping road salts several times a day, it's just, it goes, uh, the money goes out the door with it. So that's unfortunate, um, so let's just knock on wood and hope that this is the worst of the winter. Somehow it doesn't seem that way, but past few years, we've cruised through January. We've gotten, late in the season, starting to think that maybe we could recapture some of those funds or roll them over and low and behold, we would have three or four storms in March. That would make that all ridiculous. So it all just depends on how you look at it and where, where do we end up at the end of the day.
I've accepted that we deficit spend.
Yeah, we, we always do and at least this year, there's, um, there's funds there to support the account. I'm gonna distribute to you, um, the document that I've already circulated to the finance committee, a little bit out of order. I would prefer to submit things to you first, but, um, I needed to stick to a schedule with, with the FinCom. This is the personnel budget, so this is the cost of every person, whether they're a stipend employee, whether they earn a base salary off the compensation tables or off a collective bargaining agreement, in excruciating detail and it tracks the changes in salary from last year to this year for each individual who has changes. The request is for $4,318,296 for compensation. This is 32.7% of the total projected municipal budget. It represents a 2.5% increase or about $105,699 over last year. This is the lowest rate of increase since fiscal 2016, when the town was in its most extreme financial difficulty, because after that, there were a couple of years in a row where it was 5%. It was just collective bargaining agreements catching up COLAs and the addition of steps back into the mix. But this year, we're at 2.5% on the 32.7% of the budget. So just what that, whether or not the budget will go, grow faster on the municipal side than our revenue base is gonna be largely dependent on things that are mostly out of our control, health insurance, pension costs, and property casualty insurance costs. But since expenses are typically flat and are about another 30% of the budget, this two and a half keeps us well under the rate of growth for revenue and hopefully, if we have a good year for health insurance, we know we're gonna have a stable year for pension, hopefully that's what's gonna give us the stability in the budget going into next year. But this is the part of the budget that we can calculate at any time during the year, so there's no reason to delay submitting it to you. If you have any questions about what people are paid and how the increases pan out, you can go through this document in detail. Couple of quick notes about the compensation structure for the town this year. This is not a recommendation, this is a reminder. The town has a contract with our police officers, in fact, with all, our entire police department. Once accreditation is achieved, there's a $500 bonus per person that will be paid. Now, we figure that that step could occur as early as this fiscal year, so we're looking to our existing budget this year to cover the $500 bonus. Also in the contract is that after accreditation is achieved, the following fiscal year, there's a 1% increase to the base.
Okay.
That is shown in this document. The $500 bonus is one time, it doesn't, it doesn't go to the base, it doesn't go to the salary at all, but the 1% does. So at present, we view this as a likely event. We've got nothing but positive feedback from the accreditation committee and as you know, uh, the men and women of our police department have worked very hard on this. So they have delivered an outstanding product for review by the committee and anticipate success. The two recommendations from me that need to be, I actually think you need to vote on these at some point in the budget process. One is, I'm recommending a 1.75% cost of living adjustment for our municipal employees. That's where we've been for the last two years. This would be the third year. And that number was largely set by the Douglas teachers three years ago when they did the zero, 1.75, 1.75. So we brought all of our collective bargaining units to 1.75 and then extended that same number to all of our employees, so we're treating everybody the same. I'd like to stay on that trend. My second recommendation for the budget is that we continue to pay steps to eligible employees. On the municipal side, this is not very many people, okay? Many of our employees are at the top step. There are other things I would want to explore that I didn't put into writing in this budget because I wanna see where we end up at the end of the budget process or, or the middle part of the end, in the February timeframe, March timeframe, to see what kind of resources we have. My assessment of the staff is we have an outstanding staff. We should do what we can to preserve our employment base. Because we have so many people who've been at the top step for so long, they've not gotten anything but a COLA for many years. The system was designed that way, but my assessment is that at some point you have to look at the potential for longevity for those people who are with us for a very long time and who services, you know, if, if the services aren't valuable, they shouldn't be, we shouldn't keep them. It's just really that simple. Sounds like a private sector's thing to say, but it's the, God's honest truth. We collect money from taxpayers, there's a product that needs to be produced. If it's consistently proven that that product's at a very high level of quality, and then we just, we tap people out and they went for many years without step increases, many years with very modest COLAs, if they're with you for 15 or 20 years, we should at least have an open mind to a conversation about what the cost be to do some kind of longevity. But I didn't put that into this submission yet because I don't know that we will have the resources to have that conversation. So of the $105,699 worth of change, four things explain almost all of it. The COLA is a $67,806 expense. Steps for those that are eligible is $27,579. The accreditation bump for the police is $9,254. Very small offset is that fiscal '21 does not include a leap year, so there's a whole day of salaries for, especially on the public safety side, that we're not paying. There are extra hours that are generated from the motion of the calendar around the leap year that we're not paying to any of the, of the staff as well. Doesn't amount to much, but it offsets a little bit. Those are the four big drivers. The only other things that are going on are, are skill mix in the fire department is, for several years, was kinda balanced between, uh, full-blown paramedics and basics, who that, and everybody had their firefighter credentials. We've got a lot more paramedics now who need to go get their firefighter credentials, but our pay scale is set to where they stand on the EMS side, not to where they sit on the firefighter side. So, but again, that didn't really, it's material, but it didn't crack the, the threshold to be reportable as far as I'm concerned as a budget matter.
So all, this may be a dumb question, having served on this board for as long as I have, but all EMTs are firefighters or expected to be credentialed as a firefighter?
Yeah, so we, we insist on cross-trained and that's, you know, that's a pretty significant policy decision in that world. There are many communities, well, I'm more familiar with Rhode Island communities that are structured this way, because my hometown was this way. Firefighters were firefighters. Some of them did have EMT credentials, but most don't. And the ambulance service is a completely separate entity, separately staffed, different schedule rotation, different revenue stream entirely. It's a completely different department. Here we staff, we cross-staff both departments, both fire and ambulance with the same people. So, um, what that means is we have a really high skill set in the mix and it's more expensive on a per-person basis.
On a per-person basis, but it's gotta save money on a department or service-minded basis.
If, if you wanna look at workload efficiency, given where Douglas is right now in terms of its population mix and its call mix, we, we are out sometimes on two calls at the same time and you're, you're hoping your call people backfill, or it happens during the day when the chief and the deputy and everybody else is working already during the day. But a lot of times when it's just that one call, it's either a fire call or an ambulance call, same people run to both, rather than having two sets of people waiting for the, for their calls.
Works for me. Are you looking for a vote this evening?
No, I'm not. I just wanted to submit it to you for your review. Uh, the last piece of my report, Mr. Chairman, is you do have contract renewals coming up. You have my contract renewal coming up. The timeframe there, I gave you the notice that I would like to be renewed and I will be giving the fire chief notice that we intend to renew him. This is the first time he's been through a renewal, so he wasn't aware of the timeframes. It's like, no, it's six months. His contract is actually up before mine, about a month or two before mine.
Can we mess with him a little bit on that?
Yeah, if you want to. And then by the end of the year, the police chief will be close to his notice date as well, so those, those are the three big ones. Jean is on a five-year contract, so she's not up for a while.
Did we ever contract John Furnell? Is he under a contract?
We can't.
Oh, that's right.
So I did the research on that, we...
There were a DVW we could, couldn't we?
Yeah, I think so.
So you've been with us for three years?
No, it's only two and a half, but the way these contracts work is we give each other six, seven months to work out.
Right. So we're, in six months, we're three years with you.
Yeah.
Went quick.
In July.
That's good.
Seven months.
Concerned about the lack of candy that comes into the Selectman's arms.
There's a whole thing of cookies in there. I don't know what you're complaining about.
I'm just saying.
It can only fatten you so many ways.
This is helpful, thank you.
It is. So the only question I had on this is the, with the police department, they get the 1% for getting fully accredited and that's on top of the 1.75, so on one calendar year, they'll have a 2.75% increase in police salaries. Not saying that they don't deserve it, because absolutely they do. Just wanted to make sure my math was right.
Yeah, I mean, it works out to a tiny fraction more than that, because you don't combine them, you do one step then the other.
Gotcha.
So it's like 2.7506, you know, a tiny fraction, but yeah, you're right.
Okay. So we think we're gonna get accredited even though we're down in the basement? That's good.
The things we can do out of the basement. All right, is that all, Matt? You got anything else?
No, I'm, the project has gone well downstairs. I think they're almost done, uh, with the new air conditioning system. We'll be going before building facilities to talk about what we do with the old one, the, those two old compressors that are out there.
Would they work at fire?
Well, we're thinking, uh, that one's really, they're dogs, but the one that's got a little bit more juice to it is, is the one that's currently, uh, keeping the data room clo- colder. So we might just leave that on its own, separate... So we might just leave that on its own separate units already.
And let it just be here?
Yeah.
All right.
But that's all I had for you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, good sir. Should be looking for one of your very special motions, Mr. Bonan.
Just noticed, no old and new business? Not that I have anything, but we know.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Not on the agenda.
Just wanted to point out, Suzanne, we all make mistakes. We all have flaws.
It's reviewed by two other people, let me just point that out.
The spirit of the holiday season.
Running people over, then backing up.
I regretted bringing it up.
Thanks, Suzanne.
So, yeah, let me go through that.
However, since you're using a template, it's safe for us to assume.
New Year's resolution is to assume that there's going to be something omitted from the agenda moving forward. It's almost like that hidden word search. It's like, what are we missing?
I had a lot of really good ideas for tonight's meeting, but since it's not on the agenda...
Hold on, let me help you.
And if I cut and paste, then I'd make a mistake doing that.
Nah, I do regret bringing it up.
Is there any old business?
No, you don't.
We can't do that.
I can.
I would have, make a motion that...
It's not on the agenda.
I just want to plow through and make a motion that we enter into executive session for the purposes of talking about litigation and an interest in real property and then to leave that executive session for the purpose of adjournment.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Mike Hughes, aye.
Bonan, aye.
Kevin Morris, aye.